Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You're watching a Fact TV presentation of the Rockingham School Board Meeting.
Do the pledge of allegiance first. Today. I'd like to even to invite the United States of America in three public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We don't always do introductions, but let's go ahead and keep that just quickly around the table. We'll start with Carrie.
Carrie Kennedy, Principal of Central Elementary School.
Jim Vazina, helping with budgeting and finance.
Tim McCullough, Rockingham School Board.
Priscilla, Laboratory Chair.
Henry Elliott, Principal of Bellas Falls Middle School.
Megan McCarland, Assistant Principal of Bellas Falls Middle School.
Andy Haas, Superintendent.
Chris Kibbe, Rockingham School Board.
Okay, and we have Bill Morse on Zoom.
And Laura Hazard is also on Zoom. Laura is on Zoom. Laura Hazard.
And where's Laura?
She's up in the right hand corner.
Okay, and Laura, and we have Laura Hazard, Principal of Saxons River Elementary on Zoom. I think that's all of the members of the board and our staff and, okay. Adjustments to the agenda?
I don't know.
Okay, I have one, if you look at the minutes, it's November 29th, not November 30th that we're looking at. No others, communications and public comment. Room, anyone on Zoom? Okay, hearing none, review and approve the board minutes of November 20th, the November 29th, 2023. Are there any corrections to those minutes?
The one thing I noticed was on the 20th one, there were no references to Laura's presentation. They've mentioned the middle school, they've mentioned River, but I don't think they've mentioned Saxons River at all.
It did not, it had, I'm sorry, S, under S, I think, is the problem.
Okay, but that is.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, it's just on underlying Jigs.
All right.
It's halfway down under CES, so.
It's a separate bullet.
Separate bullet, okay, yeah, all right.
Thank you for catching that though.
Yeah.
Are there any other corrections or any other comments on November 20th? Are there any comments on November 29th? If not, I will put those meetings in as written. Have those approved, as written, excuse me, reports, principal. Carrie, do you want to start?
Sure, good evening.
Just really keep it as short as possible, give you about three minutes.
Okay, the big shout out I wanted to do is, we just had our Our Place fundraiser, I mean fundraiser, technically this is a fundraiser, we donated gifts to families that were for our food bank. And so our goal was 500 items and we had 800 that we collected. And so we want to thank all of our students' families and staff for all their work for the community. So just before the Thanksgiving break, I want to appreciate Carrie Pickering and Kelly Green and all this ES staff. We had a great job with our practice curricular days, and so that's a chance where everybody gets mixed up and they go into different homerooms and do different STEAM projects and work on different, you know, opportunities for the kids to work with other students and it was lovely. And so we do that usually just before the break and it's great, we'll do it again in December, February and then April. And so it gives a chance to meet with, on the students, to meet with other grade levels of kids and things. So it's a wonderful time and we appreciated that. We have picture retakes tomorrow, please, so make sure staff and students who didn't get their pictures and IDs done, we'll do that tomorrow. And shopping mall, that's a big one coming up too, so on September, excuse me, what month are we, December? December 14th is actually our shopping mall and then 13th will be the setup. So we appreciate all the donations from the community and staff for already coming in and we'll be taking those up till right till the 13th. So that'll be happening very soon, all day on the 14th. So for those who don't know, the students get a chance to go shopping for their family with the donations and they get something to get for somebody, everybody, and it's a great chance for the students to give back to somebody in their family. So it's lovely. And this Wednesday is our walk to school day at the 6th, at 7:30 in the morning, we move to Eddie Green Park and then we walk to school. So just reminded everybody for that. And just one last thing, we are doing our Harvest of the Month with our farm to school work and getting everybody ready for that. So we have our monthly taste tests and things too. So we appreciate Bonnie White from UVM, she's been coming in and doing nutrition classes with everybody. And so we really appreciate that work. And then this Friday, we have our data meeting, so we'll be going over our maps and DIBL scores that we had had before, just planning out some next groups in our intervention groups and things, so we're up right now. Any questions or comments?
I have.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Hi Carrie, thanks for the presentation. I was curious, have you been having many or above normal absences due to sicknesses?
We have, we have a lot of pneumonia, bronchitis, a lot of other sicknesses going around right now unfortunately. So we have had higher than normal absences, yes.
Would you say more than 10% absentee?
I don't have the statistic in front of me, but it's probably close to that.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, I was trying to ask you, the other principal saw their attendance number and it was in the 90s. What did yours run?
I have to run that, I'll get a student.
Also, do you have a breakdown of children in the grades?
Oh, I do, sorry, thank you, yes. We have actually had five students move out sadly, so.
I'm sorry, I won't do it.
Five students moved out of our school. We had one moved out of state, two moved to homeschooling, and then two moved out of district to another district in Vermont. So kindergarten is at 27 students, first grade is at 26, second grade is 27, third grade is 16, and fourth grade is 31, for a total of 126 students, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions for Carrie? Okay, now Laura, do you want to give us yours?
Sure, hello everyone, sorry, I'm not with you today, I'm not feeling all that great. So joining via Zoom, our enrollment as of today, 16 in kindergarten, 15 in first grade, 14 in second, 18 in third, and 15 in fourth grade. I shared with you my report earlier today, so just a few highlights. We had our first relocation drill of the year and everything went super smooth and our students amazed me, they followed expectations beautifully and all went well with that. I will let families know and I'll let them know that we were doing a drill this week and I will let them know how their students did with that. In my report, I also shared, I just thought it was important to add this in, the many different ways that we examine data and the vehicles in which we use to do so. So I didn't know if anyone had questions about that, but they consist of weekly collaboration meetings, monthly grade level data team meetings, benchmark data meetings, biweekly cares meetings, and then of course individual plans such as IEPs, 504s and ESTs. ILT work is going really well. We, as you know, are focused on accountable talk. Students have designed logos and we've combined their top design elements into two final proofs for all to vote on and the logos will be used for posters, t-shirts, letterhead, et cetera. Accountable Talk stems are making their way into all of our learning spaces. Teachers have and are working on developing norms for their use. Manipulatives such as, I shouldn't say manipulatives, but tools such as posters, rings and bookmarks have been created and the teaching, modeling and practicing and assessment, both by teachers and then self-assessment by students are really coming to light. And then on December 13th, which is our next building base day, we will finalize our family and staff documents and then share out implementation and watch some more professional learning videos. And then we have our annual white elephant sale tomorrow, super exciting. And then we will be hosting the traveling lantern to present Pinocchio the following day. Any questions that you may have?
Just a bit more of a comment, I appreciated the rundown of the different meetings that you have, that your school has with regards to follow up on the student achievements, et cetera. I think, I liked it, I thought it was very, very helpful and I was kind of feeling that's the kind of what could go in at the other schools. But I did appreciate having gotten that summary.
Thank you for your comment, Jim. It's very appropriate. Yes, the early elephant sale provides Christmas items for families. Carrie, are you doing that this year also?
Yep, that's the shopping mall, that's on the 14th.
On the 14th, yes. Thank you, I missed seeing that, sorry, thank you. Okay, let's move on to Henry.
All right, thank you guys, so currently 235 students enrolled at the middle school. We have 36 fifth graders, 57 sixth graders, 74 seventh graders, 68 eighth graders. Our ADA is right there at 92%, we've been 92, 93% each month this school year, so that's up from last year, so that's great news. Trimester one closed on Friday, grades for all students and report cards will go home this Friday on the eighth. All the students, we had the opportunity to post Superintendent Haas on Friday for our weekly Friday assembly. He had an opportunity to talk about the Student Advisory Council with the middle school students, five through eight. And we also gave out our pride cards, our last week of pride cards, so our pride cards that we give out to students, it's for those who demonstrate any one of our core values throughout the course of a week. Students can give them to students, students can give them to teachers, teachers can give them to students and teachers can give them to teachers as well. We had whopping 255 pride cards that were given out for trimester one, so we gave the goal to students to try to beat that for trimester two. Let's see, winter concert, we have our winter concert on December 14th at 7:00 PM here at the middle school. So, you know, hopefully, we look forward to some community members coming out as well. Parents and board members obviously to join us, and again, at 7:00 PM on Thursday, December 14th, here in the auditorium. We have a canned food drive going on here at the middle school, started on November 27th and will go through December 15th. One of the things that Superintendent Haas did on Friday was kind of spiced it up a little bit, talking about a central ice cream party for the winning class of the most donated, for, this will go, next week drive will go to Our Place. So that's what we're pulling in these non-perishable food items, so encouraging students daily and making my announcements to kind of bring in anything that they have laying around at home that's non-perishable that maybe you could donate. Winter sports underway, basketball specifically here, we started practices last week. Games will start on December 12th for both the boys and the girls, seventh and eighth grade basketball teams. We also had our PTO ski sale on Saturday that kind of kicks off our winter sports for skiing, which will start in January at Magic Mountain, be about six to eight Sundays in which we'll have our program rerun, which we have two staff members here who go ahead of that to make that happen. And the whole goal of the ski sale was to raise money for lift tickets for families who maybe can't afford them, as we know the price of those just continued to grow up. But yeah, and Spirit Week will be the week before holiday break, we're doing a door decorating contest for all students in their advisories to kind of make it fun, kind of like a community building activity. We'll have more information for that actually in our next meeting, I'll be able to report at that meeting. But the week of the 18th is when our door decorating contest and Spirit Week will be heading into break. I think that's it though, so any questions or comments?
Questions? Chris, folks, or Bill? Go ahead, Bill.
Yes, just a comment for Henry. I noticed in reading the principal's report that the eighth graders in social studies, among other things, are looking at how to identify or how to better identify credible sources when they're looking for information. And I just want to say thank you to the staff that's doing that. Growing up, we had one choice that was encyclopedia Britannica or Americana, and that was it, one source. And if you went on TV, it was one source, the networks. Now it's the most challenging time, rich for information, but also rich for not reliable information, let's say. So again, thank you for, thank you to the staff for those efforts.
I just wanted to add on just a little bit to what Jigs had talked about with the meetings and just so everyone is aware, on our website, on the district website, under District Offices and then District Departments, there's the multi-tiered systems of support, like curriculum and professional development, and you can get the outline of all the meetings and all, when all the assessments are going to happen and all those things. So if you want some more deeper understanding of what Laura was kind of talking about, all those different meetings, that's what happens across our building, so, sorry.
Thank you for adding that, Andy, I appreciate that. Yes, the informational thing is very important to our students. In fact, I watched a clip last night, you know, one where the cam videos are also being infiltrated by AI. And you can take one person and substitute a celebrity into that person and make it look like they're doing that. The guy that was doing it last night was, it was kind of a fun thing because he was going out, chocolate cake was the thing that would help you if you eat it in all your meals in between two. And he was doing it just to show how you could get into that thing and be there. So I applaud you for having your students start looking at that at an early age. Anybody, any other comments for Henry? Okay, go on with old business and fiscal year 25 budget is the next thing. First question is on an audit date, and can you tell us when we can expect the audits? Should I ask him or?
We're waiting, and I received page one today, which shows you a draft, kind of a draft of where they think we're going to be, and I will say, they're showing here 130,000 deficit. I would expect it would be about $170,000 deficit because of the unemployment that came in. And so I think it'll go up. I do want to say probably not unexpected, because if you can recall in the end of June, when we reviewed where we were, and I just want to go down through. Early yet was budgeted at the time, so we were, we knew we were over there. Athletics, not budgeted at the time, we knew, you know, it was $50,000 that we didn't have. Some of the audit in the school board area was budgeted below. And again, I think there was an assistant principal that was hired last year as well, so that brought us over. We netted out, the projection was about 190,000 to the good. Now, on the revenue side, we were over budgeting on tuition. So we were about 287,000, not enough revenue. So all in all, I mean, it was, it followed pretty well with what we had gauged at that time. So the audit, I'm hoping to have within a week's time, we're meeting with them tomorrow just to find out, you know, because we're anxious to get our hands on it, so that's where we are.
Okay. But free pay wouldn't, shouldn't be over budgeted because it's, it would be.
We budgeted zero, and I think you probably expended, and I'm guessing, but I think probably 100 and a quarter. Somewhere in there.
Private provided tuition.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, that was left out, okay. Okay, so we'll look at that when that comes out.
Yes.
Looking forward to seeing that, Jim?
I have a question, the, it's different to be talking about deficits now, not that goes to us.
You're just for me.
Didn't recognize deficits in the past, but when you show the fund balance, Jim, my recollection or my estimation is that that fund balance, with the exception of the monies, of the monies we received from the WNSU 2022 surplus.
Yep.
Okay, I think we received 500 and 400.
Right, right.
Eight hundred. Eight hundred and something.
Yeah, eight hundred, okay. The other, the other surplus has been allocated by the board and the taxpayers to capital reserve.
Yes.
And various contributions to different years, future years budgets.
Right.
So my question is this, with the exception of that monies, you know, the monies that we got from the WNSU, in the past, if we had a deficit, that would be funded as a line in our new budget, which would be the 25, 2025 budget.
Yep.
Okay? Because basically we had no free, oh, free surplus, so my question is, how is this 170,000 or whatever the number is, how are we going to have to deal with it? Can we?
I think, I think that the board has some wiggle room as to how they want to handle it. My, I guess what I would do is take the 800 that you received from the ESU against the 170 and know that you have to act on that balance and move that balance somewhere or back to reduce taxes.
Well, that would make a lot of sense, David, I don't know if that's legally what we allow to do.
I will, I will broach that conversation with the auditor tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, if you do that, it's for David. Okay, any other questions on the audit, any other board members? Hearing none. The next one on there was staffing before we go into the general, staffing before the 504. And when I put this in, I broached the question of Shelley Wilson, does she cover 504?
She's the coordinator for the ESU.
Does, should she be, or can Henry give us something, some information on the 504 staffing? Did he do all of that, or?
I apologize, I guess I would need more context around it. She doesn't hire staff, she just coordinates and makes sure that our plans are following.
Covers all of, all of that.
So if a team, if you're asking the question, if a team makes a decision that a student needs some type of accommodation and that accommodation involves staffing, then it's a team decision that makes that decision, but it then comes out of local budget.
Okay, do we know what levels we are, that is with our budget? Can someone give us an update on how many?
We'd probably have to go back and look at that, I mean, again, any incoming students, we would, it would be a pure estimate, because every time a student transitions to a new building, a plan needs to be revised to meet the needs of that building because it could change. So this building has four floors, a student who maybe needs an elevator, that would be an accommodation. When they go to the high school, that would be an accommodation we would not have in their plan because they don't have an elevator there, it's all one floor. So a student who maybe needed staffing support at an elementary school may not, or may, need support as they transition to the middle school. And we won't know that until much later in the year. But I guess we'd have to go back and look at 504, current 504s, what are those things? You know, we're also looking at our continued protocol around paraprofessionals and the use of paraprofessionals. Really, when we're talking about, you know, say a one-on-one paraprofessional, it's, there's got to be parameters around a real life supporting need as opposed to other reasons. And so we are looking at that structure. The other piece that might be around staffing of a 504 might be if a student has a medical need and they have a 504 for that medical need. So I've worked in the past where students have had their own nurse, the personal nurse, because their needs were so high, you know, type of thing, so. So we could look at those numbers and get that information back.
Andy, just to kind of get to the gist, it would appear to me in looking at this, this proposed budget, that there are two 504 paras at Saxons River and one 504 para at the middle school. And I just wanted, I wanted confirmation from the administration as to what the staffing, that yes, this is the staffing requirement that we have by our committee or whatever.
Well, that's current, but if one of those students or both of those students from Saxons River, when they transition to the middle school, then the middle school team needs to meet and make a determination and they'll do that before the school year ends.
Right, but what I'm saying is, we're dealing with the budget itself, okay, not all the.
I understand that, I guess what I'm trying to say is, and I know I'm not giving you the answer you were looking for, is I don't know. At this point, I just don't know.
Well, what I'm saying is, it looks to me like there's two, two paras at Saxons River and one it's at the middle school, I just want confirmation that that is in fact the status as of the current time, that will be evaluated again when the next year comes around.
Yeah, I guess I'd ask the principals to maybe speak on that, because I just, I'm sorry, I don't have like the actual in my head, but does that sound correct? That sounds correct.
Yeah, and also, not only with a transition from one school to another, but that can also change within the school as well. So I mean, I know it's a, it's a hard thing for you to be able to address, but I guess, you know, as Jim is mentioning, we're looking at budget and trying to get a handle on what your needs are going to be so that we can put it in the budget if it's needed, not put it in the budget if it's not needed, and that kind of thing. Laura, you had your hand up, do you want to comment?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So currently we have three, it's anticipated that we will have two next year and that aligns with current plans. So as Andy said and Priscilla alluded to as well, that could change within the year and certainly it is something that we meet with the 504 team at least annually, but definitely as Andy mentioned, as the transition to middle school happens. So our best guess at this point is the anticipation of two.
And the one we have here at the middle school is a, um, BI from H C R S, and that's paid out of contracted services. Uh, my building paras are separate from that, and again, that would be another, every year, we. Look at, like last year at the end of the year, we, we assessed what. This para did with this specific student, and the student that was with a BI for five oh four last year as well. Um, so that's something we start looking at in like April, usually.
Well, like I said, the, the reason I raised it is, uh, Laura currently has three. It's gonna go to two, but in the current circumstances, that student that's currently leaving Saxons River. Is coming here, scheduled to come here. So that's, what I'm saying is, is that in the, is that in your budget now?
Currently, for for this F Y twenty-four?
Yeah, two twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
It is, you've put, you've put a five oh four.
It's, it's there, yes.
Okay.
Good point.
Which would give you two five oh four plus two building, or just?
So, with, with the, yes, so next year we'll be looking at. Two five oh four and two building, correct?
Currently, you have three.
Currently, I have four.
But correct me if I heard you right, that one of those five oh fours is not.
Currently here.
But they're not. In the salary line for paraprofessionals, they're in the contracted service line, I guess. Because they're not, they're not an employee of ours. So they would, from the anticipation, the anticipation is there might be. Um, or currently in the budget is a salaried five oh four para. And there's dollars in contracted services for of behavior interventionists.
Thank you.
But so they're, they're not all in, so when you look at the, when you look at the list of names. And you count out, like, there's someone else in contracted services you're just not seeing, because they're in contracted services.
Okay, so let me just clarify now. So you have two building paras that are in there. And then you have a five oh four para that's under contracted services.
So currently, as is right here for next year, I have two building paras. I have a five oh four para, and then one of the other five oh four paras is under contracted services.
And the two, the two building paras, uh, what, what are those positions?
Uh, one of them is, uh, he was hired years back as a, um, physical, physical education para. We have, uh, four P E classes over thirty-five students. So he's basically like a para to aid the P E teacher, um, for those larger classes, so that's one. Uh, the other one is our planning room, I S S coordinator. So if we have in-school suspensions, or if we have any students who would need a place to do some work. Uh, get up on some work, they work with him in, um, one of our classes, smaller.
If the planning room's not being used, what happens with that?
Um, that para is used to have or coverages for a one-on-one, uh, he's taught. Um, today, I'd have him going as a one-on-one para, uh, because it wasn't being used, um, we had him. Fill in for classroom teacher vacancies, uh, when we don't have subs, uh, which subs are, the sub list is very, very thin. Um, so he kind of becomes a jack of all trades, I guess.
Okay, thank you for that. Um. And you deal with what's under contracted services, because it, um. I I had thought that that was only second social services, but currently there's other. Other ones that are under there as well.
Yeah, well, there's a hundred, there's a hundred and three thousand dollar.
So this year we have, uh, we have two, so we have that five oh four BI, um. And the money, uh, we have another BI as well, um, that's for a student to. Qualify for an I E P, um, but is not currently on an I E P, um, yet, and we're going through the process. So that's why that money is there for this year, um, and as you can see, it's just a copy and paste, uh, for next year, um.
Well, it's actually, uh. All right, the one thirty-one.
Right, yeah, so, um, again, that's just.
What does the hundred and three thousand?
Um, those two BI salaries.
Imperative?
Um, yeah, from H C R S, yeah. So it's a contracted service, it's not somebody that works for us specifically.
Okay, so both of those paras are H C R S.
Correct.
Okay, so. I.
And they total one hundred and three thousand.
Okay, so psychological services are listed separately then on here, that's not a contracted service. Okay, that that's helping a little bit. So are are all the psychological services and all the, um, uh, O T services, those are straight on our budget?
No.
Pardon?
Uh-oh.
Andy?
So.
And speech.
So you have, so they're, they're, in the past, like I'm looking at the high schools right now, in the past, there was some speech services, because there was a student. Uh, there could have been, I wanna try and be, uh, a student who potentially. Under a five oh four needing accommodation around speech services, and so therefore. You would have had that, if that student no longer is in the building, that's why I'm looking at the object. Um, page, um, ninety-nine, is that what it is, or nine, I was thinking? Um, um, page nine, um, you'll see under speech services, it says fifty-two fifteen, and that was for F Y twenty-three. And then you see it zeroed out, because that student had no longer in the building. Um, but as far as O T services, P T services, psych services, those things. Typically should be at the ESU level and part of your assessment. The only time that it, um, and that's where we're, we're working towards a model where we're not necessarily having. Schools go out and get that, what can we handle in-house? So like speech services, like, that had to do with an auditory. Um, need, we don't have audiologists in our, you know, in our services, but we have. Psychological services, we have speech services, so we provide those using, um, student services. At, at best we can, and then there's times we don't, so, so what we've tried to do is not have, um. That the buildings are picking those costs up anymore as part of their local budgets.
Uh, okay, so your, our O T services and our psych services will be part of the contracted services, is that what you're telling us?
Be part of your assessment through student services.
Yeah, but does it come from the contracted services that are?
Comes from your assessment, uh, it's not even, it shouldn't be built into your budget at all.
Okay.
So, so what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, if someone needs an occupational therapist, we employ occupational therapists.
Right.
And so therefore, the occupational therapist can work with all students. And so, in the past, when we were in a reimbursement model. There was often times that people would say, they, this person who works for special education cannot work with this regular ed student. Because we don't get reimbursed for them, under the block grants. We take care of our special ed students, we have extra time, we can take care of our regular ed students as well. And so, in the past, there used to be this, like, buildings would carry some funds to try and provide. Duplicate services at times, if they needed to, and we don't feel that we need to do that unless it's. Necessary in some way, like a BI, because we might not have a behavior interventionist.
Okay, I'm just trying to get it very clear in my mind, what the contracted services are versus the. Psychological services, such the speech, such the O T, they were in our budget, and so if you move those services to the. S U, then we are assessed by the ESU, we're still paying them in our money, so that's what. Our board is trying to figure out our budget and.
I I understand, I understand that, under, so on page, so on page eight. On contracted services for the middle school, the hundred and thirty-one, five, five, zero. What I heard Henry say is that is for two BI's through H C R S. We don't have behavior interventionists in student services. So those are people who are, what are referred to as registered techni, behavior technicians, technicians, R V Ts. And but they go through a specialized training, and we would like to get to a point that. We can hire a paraprofessional in-house and be able to provide that service. It's just, sometimes we can't, we we have difficulty filling. Positions, and so you have to outsource it, and that's where that outsourcing is, is gone. Um, now, it is possible that next year, we might be able to hire. Um. Paras, um, and that student services could hire those paras, and then we would have an offset where. We could do some kind of a shift of, of noting that that, those dollars were not funded, but they're coming out of the assessment. But at this point, we don't have a, a person who can do that kind of work.
So the, um. Okay, so contracted service one thirty-one, five fifty, that's two BI's.
Okay, what's in page eight, Chris?
Uh, yeah, that's where I'm at.
Okay, there's a hundred and fifty-five hundred, which is the two BI's of every.
Yeah.
And you're gonna need those two next year.
Um, I mean, again, one of them is part of a five oh four, um, I mean, it was a student's five oh four. And his BI for him last year as well. Um, the other one, I think, is going special ed, so I don't know how that will. Look, um, for next year.
So again, if a student were to be identified, um, and receive an I E P, an individual identification plan. And that, that cost shifts over to student services. And so, if that student has a BI with them, then the BI cost. If they, if they get, if they become eligible in, in December of next year. Then the remainder of the year gets shifted over to student services. It then comes back to you through the assessment, but that would then show up as a, that line wouldn't get spent down.
Yeah, okay. And the other twenty-six, uh, Chris, is the SAP. Whatever that is.
Those weren't my questions, Jim, you kind of stepped on my. It was, right, I mean, it wasn't really a question, it was the one thirty-one, five fifty, I don't know why you keep coming up with one oh three, it's one three one, five fifty.
Is, look at line two thirty-seven.
I'm looking at line thirty of page eight.
I know, because it's a sum of three numbers.
So what, what page are you on? I'm sorry. It'd be helpful to just know what page you're looking at.
Well, page eight shows the breakout of the, of the, what, the five, three, two, one, a ten.
Yeah.
So, and line two thirty-seven is. Contracted services, and then, then a little bit further down, two forty-one is SAP.
So, I I I apologize, I'm not following when you say, line two forty-one, I only have line thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three.
Page eight.
No, what you're looking at, Jim. Are you looking at the current pack that just got handed out?
The Jim, I just, I don't. Are you on this one? Yeah, I think you're on a different page, a different packet.
Okay, I'm sorry. We're there.
And just for clarification, page nineteen, if you're looking for a breakdown of contracted services. And, and again, that's fourteen down. Line, line fourteen now.
Line nineteen?
Four, lines four. Um, yeah, page nineteen.
Yeah, and there's Jim's one oh three fifty.
Yeah.
Got it, okay, now I got it.
Yeah, okay.
That only gets a hundred and three thousand.
But there's a twenty-six thousand dollar item. I don't see the, this thing, yeah, but. It was on the other.
Oh, is that page, uh, twenty, two hundred and twenty-one there? I think it's line seven thirty. I say it's being twenty-six thousand?
Where was that, four hundred and seventy-three?
Page twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's on page twenty-one, that's the current packet.
Right, services, student assistance program.
That's, uh, that is listed as a contracted service.
Right, so it's that plus the one oh three, right?
And what is SAP?
Uh, student assistance program. So it's, uh, it's somebody who basically counseled students who, um, could need alcohol, could need just.
And we go with all our other guidance and psychological services from the ESU, and that's something.
That's something that we'll have to look at, right, Andy, because. This year is. Yes, uh, I, I mean, we, we have been, um, at the. Level, we've been trying, we've always blended that position through grants. Um, and, um, it's usually been a hard time that serves both the. Middle school and the high school predominantly, uh, we have struggled since Heather Warias. Who was that person, uh, two years ago, when she left that position, we haven't actually been able to fill it. We haven't been able, we thought we had someone at the end of last year, um, and then they resigned before the school year and began. Um, and so, um, it, it's been a, um. A real challenge, uh, to find someone who wants to work in that field. To bring someone in, they've got an open position for quite a while. So, um.
Right.
But I think Henry could just speak to the, to the, the, the dollars that are in there, I don't.
Yeah, so the dollars are in there, I mean, I don't know how, the configuration for that, but I do know that, I mean, to answer your question, Jim, I mean, we. And there's other modes, it's just somebody that was hired at four hundred and six thousand, except it just carried over from what I hear is approved budget. Uh, was for that individual that we had hired, who.
Well, but it wouldn't have been in your budget, it would have been, well, this is the allocation, I guess, rather than.
I, I believe that the position. In the past, was split up amongst a lot of different things. So there was a little bit of money coming from here, and a little bit of money coming from here, and a little bit of money coming from here, and so the middle school. Probably carried portions of that.
Yeah.
Uh, which is why you see that continuation. That's been part of the problem, is that with all the grant funding. I don't have, I don't have enough dollars to offer a person a full-time position. So, um, and it's hard to find someone to work for point seven, point six kind of thing, so. Um, in the past, these positions have been. I don't know, they were, they chopped up, but they've been combined with many different other positions to, to create a full F D E, so.
Yeah, it's just that, what, my, my, uh, the only, my only purpose is, is that. I, I'd rather, I'd like to avoid double counting.
Yeah.
Okay, so, if, if the twenty-six thousand is in there, because like you said, it's been carried over from year to year. Uh, the, I don't know, the two thousand twenty-three expense line, uh, means anything, but. Uh, I don't know what that. So.
Then you have contracted services on page twenty as well for athletic director, although there's nothing there. Um, yeah, that is. They're direct, they're, okay, so you've got the, you've got that above there, I see that, it's, it's, it's on line fifty-one, no, that's the.
No, line forty-eight?
Line. Uh, salaries, athletic, yeah, that, that's, that's a. Big increase as far as athletic director, because the athletic director salary is listed in the C B A. Under one of the, um, co-curricular salary items. Um, at around three thousand.
I think it's, it's either ten or twenty percent, oh, it's, it's, it's ten percent of ten percent.
We have an approved and increase on athletic director of that kind.
And, and again, I, I guess if you wanted to send it back to the high school and say, hey, got luck, we're not paying her, you could do that.
Yeah, I, I mean, when we moved the athletic director position to, um. It covered both schools, I mean, we, we tried to break it out, and how much time and, and is. Of his position is he spending overseeing the high school, which is about ten. Of his position is he spending overseeing the high school, which is about ten percent, so that. Number you see there is a reflection of his ten percent of his salary.
That's a, that's a co-curricular position, it's number forty-eight on page twenty.
Or where is it on this? Is it a second?
Uh, no, it's in here as. Salaries, athletic director, BFMS. At thirteen thousand.
And again, I I for me, I think it's just trying to represent something that's happening now. I mean, I'm sure that he's involved, you know, even with some of the safety protocols that have to be in place. Um, and I I think this ten percent may be low. But still, it's just a uh something to remind people that there is uh some coordination. With your athletic director. At the, at the middle school, I think that's all it's trying to represent.
Sixty, the co-curricular teacher salaries are are. Quite a bit lower, you wanted to speak to that?
Yeah, I mean, the only co-curricular teacher salaries that are paying out now are course advance, um, which is when. That we have there, that's why I think that that decrease, I'm not sure where that number came from, uh, twenty-seven, thirty-seven, it's kind of a.
And I think some of, I think some of the athletic director got charged in their last year.
It looks like.
See, they, I didn't, when you start mixing athletics, athletics is a fourteen-hundred function. Not a fifteen-hundred, fifteen-hundred is called co-curricular, drama, music. You know, that type of activity, and I I think somewhere we 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 got off course and said, ah, what does it matter? It does, I mean, we have to follow the agency of education's guidelines, so we don't have a choice. It it has to go into the fourteen-hundred for athletics.
Yeah, but our salaries are are supposed to be based on the CBA, which is, that stuff doesn't seem to be following that, so I'm just trying to figure out.
I always looked at the CBA as the amount that an individual could be paid. Now, I didn't think that that CBA said, oh, you can only pay the high school for the athletic director.
It's only for middle school too.
Yeah, okay, but I think the two together, I think will combine and and certainly.
Ours is only around three thousand.
Well, so we we can go back and we can do that, I I just, I.
I just don't know.
I mean, that that comes out to about three percent of his time, so, I mean. What we're trying to do is improve the athletic opportunities for students uh in this building and. Um, the three thousand dollar stipend is. Not getting, not improving the athletic programming, and so when we moved the position to be. Covering the two buildings was to try and get to one program, so when we run like a. When we run a parent night, the idea is we bring everybody together, so. Students who participate in athletics, no matter where in the district are hearing the exact same information. We're not, we're not splitting it, we're, I mean, we're we're, there were actually times looking at it that we were competing, that's why we moved it. The position, we're, we're actually competing, we're saying one thing at this building, and it's not because the person, they. The two just weren't communicating and and what was happening at this building was completely different than what's happening at the high school. The requirements to play athletics at the middle school, completely different than the requirements for kids to play at high school. And there's thought, there should be some difference, but it becomes culture shock when the kids walk up to the high school, because they're not even prepared for. What it's going to be, and so we, that was the the goal, was to to move it to that point, I mean. But.
Yeah, I just, I just want one clarification of the board and and for them to be thinking about. These kind of these items so that we can.
Obviously, that on the roster page, but I guess it being handed differently. Hearing the cost of the athletic director at high school, so we don't have an athletic director here anymore.
No, and it, uh, they, Andy was trying to get one person to do both. Just so we add some of that con- continuity, and that continuity probably does help some. I don't know whether it increases, you know, games or any of that kind of stuff, but it probably does.
It's the first year, with all due respect.
Yeah, well, what I'm saying, it 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 probably does. And and you're working to for those kinds of things that, you know, that. Um, will help the program, but um, I think we also have to look at costs and and the way it's broken down and what. You know, the way the positions are assigned and and what's in the CBA, whether, you know, you know, what. What this board wants to do about them, so it's a question I'm just throwing out so that. You know, people can be looking at those things and thinking about it. We also have a salaries coordinator, work-based learning one, that's on line one hundred, what is that?
Well, again, that is the 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 same idea was that the. Atzer has funded that position for two years and um. Atzer will not be funding that as we move forward. The position not only serves uh the high school, but also serves the middle school. Originally, our intent was to have it be part of the SU and be assessed out to the district. Uh, but looking at the SU assessments, it was too high, um, and so. We decided not to fund that position at the SU level, which would have been a K through twelve. Uh, emphasis, um, and the, because the high school. Felt strongly about that position, they are going to, uh, they've added that position into their budget, however, again. The work-based coordinator does come down, does coordinate and do things for our seventh through eighth grade, seventh and eighth graders. Um, to prepare them um as they move up. Um, and so the the ask was to. Again, share some of that cost, only because it is benefiting students in this building.
So that's, that's an Atzer position, yeah?
It was. The uh, Henry, where where would be the uh, the fees that we paid to referees? Um, that's gonna be.
Before you do that, let's finish with this, Atzer, what Atzer position is that, that, because I thought the Atzer positions were going away, so.
The work-based coordinator. Has been an Atzer-funded position for two years.
And has been working with middle.
And has been working with both middle and high school students for two years. We wanted to add that position at the SU level, but. Having to make some difficult decisions, the, we had to decide not to carry that position at the SU level. The high school felt very strongly based on the work and the communication with Henry and the work that they were doing down here. That there was still benefit to carry that position or to add that position on. And so trying to look at about time-wise, how much would be spent at the high school and how much would be spent at the middle school. Was a ninety-ten split. And the ask then is for the middle school or Rocky Hand to pick up ten percent of that salary. Because there is a, there are. This past year, we brought middle school students up to participate in. Events at the high school that had to do around work-based coordinating, um, there's, there's even more projects designed for this year. Um, to get those students um. Ready for um, when they're, it builds into their whole piece of their their schedule, for their taking class and what they're interested in. How are they going to prepare and what are they going to take, and so a lot of the work, work that the coordinator does. Is working to get kids excited so that they can go into internships right away, so that we make a connection between the curriculum and between. Um, the the work.
Isn't that something that counselors usually do and work on? I I'm just looking at if we're adding, we're looking at a budget where we're, you know, we. Are looking at.
So school counselors spend, schools counselors spend uh a good deal working with students. Around academics, around the specifics, around work-based and getting them into interns, I I think that and. The work-based coordinator is common and has given presentations to both the FQ and to the high school. The amount of time that 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 person spends um cultivating relationships with. Um, businesses and employers in our community. And is working to get students, we we are actively working to get seventh and eighth graders into. Um, internships or at least side by sides with employers. In seventh and eighth grade to help make connections uh for their academics. That is something we have not done in the past, and a school counselor is pretty full up with their time to now spend. That time cultivating, working with with businesses and finding what's appropriate, because what might be appropriate for. One middle schooler is not appropriate for all middle schools, and so it takes a lot of nuancing to find out what that student wants to do and then connecting them with. Um, figuring out rides, figuring out um schedules, how we're gonna get students there, so it's not just. You know, sit down with a student and and have a conversation, it's a lot of work.
So I just want to say, I don't have a problem with either of those positions, I don't have a problem with either of those positions. Uh, but uh, are there any other new shared with the high school positions, or are those the only two?
Those are the only two.
What I think we should be coordinating with the high school. Kids on their way there.
I think there definitely needs to be some coordination, it's just that I'm looking at a lot of the increases that we're putting in and just. Wanting to ensure that, you know, we're aware of of what is being put in and whether we can actually. Um, what what those.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, it's good that you're asking the question. I I appreciate that you're asking it, but we're getting information.
So I guess again. I know with signing warrants, I see, you know, it's not, it's not a lot of money, but I see a lot of uh. Ends for referees, and I was just wondering where that.
Yeah, so Jim or Andy, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that was in the news in B slide fifty-nine, um.
Yeah, so it'd be a fourteen-hundred function, right, cause that's athletics.
Jim.
Eight, eight thousand eight hundred?
That was one of the items that wasn't budgeted two years ago.
Okay, yeah, so that's. And so that's, that's listed as fifty-eight eleven.
Did you say coaches were?
No, 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 I was, I was wondering about the referee fees. The coaches are up here, the coaches are. Okay, I just wanted to, I wanted to be sure it was in the, in the budget.
Any other questions on the middle school?
The uh, I was just, I'm just curious to do a rundown, uh. Uh, cause we're gonna go from middle school to central to the, the, um. With regards to the, the non. In-house positions, I guess, um, for the middle school. We uh, we've had a, an allocation of two and a half, two-point-five title pieces, interventional. That correct, Andy? Middle school?
Every point, I would have to, um, it's three point five, is what we're allocating for next year.
Three point five, yes.
Three point five title next year.
If I have the money, thank you for.
And then sped, we have five teachers allocated to the middle school. And twelve spe- special ed parents.
Can you say it again? I'm sorry.
Five teachers. And twelve parents.
I I would have to check with Stacy Alexander, I don't know, it's off my head, um, so.
And then we do, at the middle school, we do have two guidance. On staff in our regular.
Correct, two coordinators who manage, also manage our, there are five of our case managers as well, for five, six and seven.
But we've got these four. Or is it four? Yeah, we have these four, five oh four. Two in-house paras.
Case manager is different than a para, so they're in charge of running all the five oh four meetings, they hold all the five oh four paperwork. Um, they're the community, we basically.
So she's the coordinator for the whole SU. So the SU, under, under. AOE reg, we have to have a five oh four coordinator. Someone who coordinates, makes sure that all the plans are being written correctly and supports them, but in the building. You then have, just like in student services, we have a director of student services and we have a case manager.
The, and how many five oh four stools uh do you have currently?
I'll have to look to get an exact number, um.
But it's quite a few.
Yeah, yeah, a lot in the seventh grade specifically, but yeah, we, quite a few.
Okay, so, be interesting to, you know, not, not, not really, yeah, it's funny, but, you know, we've got a breakdown of the numbers. Special ed kids, but it'd be interesting to get.
Well, we used to do that years ago and, and even then. A good third of all the kids in every class were on some sort of plan, either special ed or.
Well, we're easy, I think we're easily there.
I'm sure we were.
Two thirds across the entire SU are on some type of plan. But I, but I think, I think it's really, really important, because um. That a five oh four can cover so much about a student. And and it's, I, I mean, you could have as simple as a student who has migraines. All the way up to a student who has some pretty complex needs. And five oh four is about accommodation and and reasonable accommodations, and it's so. Um, it's about access to education and it's a federal law that we have to provide it, so um, we, you know, you can't just say like. You know, they didn't pass muster or something of that nature, so it's, it's, so sometimes you could have. A lot of kids on five oh fours, but they may not be very complex, so you have a lot, you you've got a lot of. Plans, but they're not in-depth, and you could have three in-depth plans that take a lot of time from a person, so it's, it's. I, without knowing the numbers, but I just, it, it ebbs and flows, and then we have, you know, our our students who have EST plans on top of that. So those are educational support plans, those are students who haven't been identified. Uh, necessarily with any type of disability, but have some type of, type of working plan that we're trying to. Support the student, so uh, and school counselors are actively involved in that. As long as, as well as teachers and as well as like the school nurse, and so all of that, and that's why I was. Brought up that, that webpage, because all of that is built into, that's the supports we provide for students, so.
Yeah, it can be anything from just something that's an accommodation that a. Teacher can do in the classroom, which is supported at a school, which is something where they need additional supports. To to help them out, so it's pretty.
And I think it's also just worthy to note, not that I know of any student who's done it, it is plausible. Plausible, that a student could have an EST plan, a five oh four plan and an IEP and a health plan. Technically, we try and bundle that, we do a little, you know, a little bit of uh, you know, progressive or whatever, um, but, or or State Farm and bundle. But um, but it is. But um, but it is plausible that it, just because you have an I E P doesn't mean you, it's exclusive and you don't have anything else. Or just because you have one, you can't have the others. So just, so I don't know if any student has all those, but just plausible.
I do.
I may or may not have one.
I didn't realize that those could intertwine, to be honest.
At times, they can.
And I, I had not heard that before.
Yeah.
Yeah, usually, I mean, like it usually move from one to the other, so you don't, you aren't carrying both all the time. But anyway, it depends on what it is. I will know that they're gonna have to look at, at budget lines and how much there is there, but at this point, I think they're still.
Yeah, I think we're getting all our questions answered.
Did you have any more on the middle school?
Yeah, I, I don't, I think the uh, uh I think there's a couple areas that, that, you know, we'll, we'll probably discuss that further as we get to uh the pool there. Their findings, uh but you know, there's, there's some moving down uh on Henry Bass. And uh uh but uh anyway, I think as far as questions are concerned, I think I won't, I won't.
Chris, are you, can you have any other questions?
No, I don't think so. Um the, the new position, the dean of students is on that line. One twenty-nine.
Where is that?
On page twenty-two.
Yes. Yes, Chris.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm, that's kind of a thing, you know, leaving a lot of extra at that level, but service and things, they provide counseling type services too. And looking at whether, whether you need two counselors plus the dean of students. As, you know, whether we need the dean of students and one counselor.
So I don't think a dean of students offers counseling services, so I think that, I wanted to spell that right now. That is not the purpose, no, that is not the purpose of a dean of students. It, it's to support students who um are dysregulated and, and, and support teachers. You're offsetting the dean of students by getting rid of those paras. That students need support in the building. And, and we have a, we have a higher number of dysregulated students throughout both of our buildings. But at middle school age, there's a higher number. And they can speak to it a little bit more and more granular. But if, what you're looking at is if we didn't have the dean of students, they'd be asking you for three extra paras. That's pretty much the cost. And we know that the research shows that the, by, by, by hiring a specialist who can handle things, you're getting far better bang for your buck than hiring paras. And so it, it was a, a decision, do we, do we maintain paras? Um or do we maintain bring, who can only work with a certain number of kids? So they're only working with a few kids at a time? Or bring on someone who can work with all students throughout the entire day, throughout all hundred and seventy-five days of the school? So, but it is not counsel. I, I mean, I, so I, but they can speak to much more what the day-to-day looks like.
Yeah, I mean, I have an idea of students' laws that frees me up to do, I have supervision evaluation, I need to be there to give treats. I'm also there for the students. I'm able to get in classrooms more often, which is, which is kind of my goal when I became an admin. Um is, you know, I love teaching, so I did it for fifteen years. Um I love admin. The thing I missed the most with admin last year, um which this year is completely different, partly because of that thing with students was being in the classroom and working with kids, um and seeing the kids and seeing my teachers. We're able to teach the kids, so right now, um the formal evaluation season is, is up and running and uh work through, you know, loads of evaluations throughout the period. You know, it's probably the very period teachers first three years and notice they've been around for, for a little bit. But just kinda uh being there to supervise them and often let me back in. And I mean, I said coming in, like climate and culture was my number one goal. And that was because without the correct climate and culture, we're not gonna reach those academics. The kids wanna be here. Our attendance numbers are up over four percent from this time last year. Kids are in the classrooms more often, they're visiting the students there. She's able to be present and work with and support teachers to keep kids in the classroom. Um our suspension rates are down significantly. You know, I mean, I just, the kind of things that we're seeing with her help, the kind of things I'm able to do um for the staff, like I said, and therefore for the students, it's just again, kind of aside it enough. Um and, you know, I mean, I, and I would encourage anybody that wants to come in for a day and check it out. You're always welcome. I mean, you could see how this place runs, um you know, and, and it's uh, it's, it's been great. I, I, I mean, I don't know, I don't know if you have any, anything to add to that, but I think that.
I just think that not only are we like lucky with the position itself, but the three of us complement each other so well. It's, you know, our dean is coming in with this alternative education background and she's working in difficult places. And she has an approach with students that, you know, I'm learning from her every single day in the way she interacts with students. And, you know, it's been great and I've been able to do, you know, we're doing something very similar to what Carrie does where the kid gets to do this exploration thing. Well, when in a school of two hundred and fifty students, that takes a month to plan. And, you know, if we didn't have Kat, all Kat responsibility become mine. And then, you know, we're not able to do these things to continue to build the culture and climate and get students to want to be here and want to learn. And it's, you know, we have presentations and all sorts of things, like there is so much value to what our dean does. And it just is, it makes my job. You know, I absolutely love being here and it's hugely because of Henry and our dean.
Henry, are, are you su- uh evaluating the title one teachers?
I am this year, yes. Yep, yep, yep. Actually just finished my first round.
Good.
Sweet.
That's the other actual piece too, is we've split the evaluation process, which wouldn't have been able to have it and Henry would be doing the entire staff. But we're.
Well, I think you can partially answer the question on that, but, but we had a dean of students and uh principal last year. We went to um having, adding the um assistant principal back in this year with the idea that the dean of students would be one year. So um continue with explaining why you need three plus the two counselors, because that's a, you know, the increased staff with one and just the other. And I, I think that in, that probably is part of what we need to hear.
Well, like Andy said, um my dean of students isn't a counselor. Um the counselors work with students on a different level uh than my dean of students here does. Uh also, my counselors manage the five reports, they're the case managers for the five reports, um which is something that, you know, what, what my team does, isn't necessarily something that she would be able to take on or we would be able to take on. Uh a last hour of, of basically supervision sheet of like what each one of us are responsible for. This is something that we shared with the staff at the beginning of the year. If you eliminate her position, you would see everything that we would absorb and have to absorb, which obviously is time. Um, you know, I know obviously the two of us could, could we get it done? I'm sure, I'm sure. Um we did last year, but last year we stayed afloat. We didn't make gains. Um the climate of this building, I can't emphasize enough the change that we've seen. And kids are in the classroom more and I know, and I know that the academic piece will come along with it, because that's just how it works. Being in education for seventeen years, like when you have a good climate and a good culture and then it's good and kids are showing up at school and kids wanna be in school, they're gonna learn. Um and that's kind of what, what the piece is there. So I think the big piece, separation between the counselor and the dean of students is that's not what she is. She's not a counselor. Um so if we were to take away a counselor, we'll eliminate one of them and then plus putting some more, um you know, weight on, on, on all of us. I, I, did I answer your question at all?
I know, just to be clear. And if I, if I may, I, I, I think, if I could just add on to there. The research shows that climate is, culture and climate is, is one of the main uh indicators for academic growth. That if students do not feel safe, if students do not feel supported, then they don't perform academically. And so the, the, the real push is, and, and I know everyone says they're tired of hearing about COVID. But, and COVID was three years ago. But I equate it the same way as, you know, it's easy for me to gain weight and it's really hard for me to lose weight. So when you lose, when you lose um learning, you can learn it, you can lose it really fast. To learn it back and to fill that gap takes two to three times longer. And it's not, and, and half of that is if kids are dysregulated and not able to access school, then their learning loss, the gap becomes even bigger. And I can tell you on Friday, um when I was here, just the energy of being here for one of the uh of your, your, your morning events was so much different from the last two years. But also six years ago, if I think back to six years ago, I think we're good six years ago. So I'm not, you know, I, the energy of students and watching students, watching students support each other um that you normally wouldn't see at that level was just amazing. And I, and I, I mean, I had to say something to the whole school because it was, it, it was that impressive. And I think the work that Henry and Megan and Kat have done, along with the whole staff to support students. You know, when we talk about the concern of, of where students are academically within our, and, and I welcome that conversation um in our whole S U. When, when, when students know they're safe, you know, if you think of Maslow's hierarchy of, of need. When people feel safe, that's when they can start learning. They can't learn. We can, we can put them in a classroom and we can give them the best teacher. But if they're thinking about what might happen when I go home tonight or if I'm gonna go, you know, what, or anything's gonna happen after school, they're not gonna be able to learn. And so that was the goal, was to shore that up and to see by bringing in the dean of students this year and using up their funds was, is it, do, does it have an impact? And we are in December and I think it was even in October when we were looking at numbers and seeing the impact.
Does, do the board members have other questions on the next?
I just think, I'll just say like, I think it's helpful, and I, I know I've said this before, but as we go through the budget, we think about how we're allocating funds and trying to keep costs down for taxpayers. The primary function is to produce a school system that is really supporting our students. And so I think when I think about the, the data that we looked at and the climate data and the academic data, this is where the, the funds need to go to be able to support students to continue to go through that. So it's helpful for me as we're talking about this to, to hear and make those connections between what we're seeing, where we see the greatest student need and, and for you all to be able to speak directly to that, I think it's helpful in thinking about how we're prioritizing funds.
Any other questions on, on that before we move to the other schools? Okay, um let's look at um Central next, I guess.
It is Central.
It is Central, Central, yeah. Somebody?
Please, could I just ask that we just have the page number and the line number so we're all on the same? No, just so, I, I think it, it will help us all move a little quicker through it.
I, I think maybe one thing that, that been looking for the minutes from last time I came up was that Central said there was a hundred eighty thousand contracted services. So I guess, again, I'm trying to know what their contracted services cover.
Eighty-five, you know.
Right, and it was shifted to line one under teacher salary, basically.
I'm sorry, here.
It was shifted from one of those to teacher salaries for line one. I said line three, sorry, on page twenty-seven.
Was there a teacher just in the wrong place?
No.
No, it's basically moving to cover. Um so there was a request about an additional either academic or behavior support person. And the funding had been allocated, so this would be a reduction in um behavioral interventionists at the student level and going into putting it in the academic piece. Um and so that was the question of presenting versus the um academic intervention. And so.
But you see that, the, the, we've been hitting the S U level with the interventional. Okay, so the eighty-five coming out basically went in at the S U.
No.
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 That's adding, adding a person to your, to your staff, right?
The eighty-five thousand that came out was under contracted services of psychological service. That was for a B I.
Couple of.
Right, a couple of B I.
Mm-hmm.
Same thing that we were just talking about with five oh fours, with, with the middle school. So those students don't need that level of support anymore.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a, a saving, just not being shifted to the S U.
Okay.
And so what Carrie is asking is to use those funds to, to support an interventionist at her building. We're still trying to map out an academic interventionist or a behavior interventionist and um looking at the data of what the students' needs are.
With, if to line one, they're actually, they're that money to line one, they wanna add.
It's not adding a person. We have, there's people, it's just shifting the salary uh because of somebody who's been paid out of Esser. There's interventionists that have been paid out of Esser that would now come back to local funds.
That's not a buster, that's not out of our budget, Carrie, so it is adding, that's what we're not.
It, it is an added budget.
Add to the budget, but the personnel already exists. I just want to clarify it.
Well, yeah.
But so you made up the money by cutting to B I.
Correct. Correct.
So you put down these um superstars, if there is to.
Two behavioral interventionists, similar to a parent, but the more behavioral experience.
Under uh contracted services.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Now, isn't there uh an interventionalist uh that the middle school shares that's in the S U budget? Is that, is it just Sachin Durbin?
But you're saying interventionists from Sachin Durbin that would be going to the middle school?
No, 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 I'm talking about in the S U budget.
There are no interventions.
Two people, two people to the S U. And the psychological services at the.
Well, I think you're just, I know what you're talking about, Jim, but you're, you don't have the right label for the person. Um it, it's the uh.
Clinician.
Clinician. Yeah.
You move the clinician to the.
S U, correct.
For valid reason. And so we, we expected to see the savings come out of our budget from what you've taken in and they're now allocating to us from the S U. So when I saw the eighty-five thousand brought, I assumed that was the clinician. And the uh, you know, my feeling is if, if, if we had five oh four B I's or whatever you call them in there before and we don't need them anymore, then should be in there. Uh but uh, but I, like I said, I, I, I know we're getting, we're getting clogged at the S U. That's the big issue here, okay? Is, is the amount of increase that the S U is asking for. Uh because that gets added into what we come up with here, so it, that's what we're concerned about.
So I, I guess I would ask, Carrie, I don't know what the eighty-five thousand under, on page uh, was it twenty-nine? On page twenty-nine, there's still eighty-five thousand in there.
Still eighty-five.
I don't know what that one is.
And then it also been for a percentage of the um
Five oh four.
The five oh four, but it's also for the um uh like I called it, like the clinician. Having your clinician.
So that should get reduced down based on, that, that number needs to come down on page twenty-nine.
Correct. And then that was also for some of the uh behavioral interventions. There were two sections of eighty-five thousands.
Two sections, there were two eighty-five thousand.
There were two eighty-five thousand, correct.
Just as a point of clarification, page thirty-six.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm looking at line five ninety-eight. Is the eight and five, and I, I just wanna clarify, is that the one that should be?
Is the eight and five and I, I just wanna clarify, is that the one that should be reduced or? Page thirty-six?
Thirty-six.
Line five nine eight, yeah.
Five nine.
Yeah, it's eleven oh one, yeah.
Yes. That one's.
Is what you said, number five over?
Five nine eight.
Yep.
On page three-three-six.
Those are the BI's.
Those had been the BI's, correct.
So.
So those are gone.
So those.
That that is gone, but then also.
Where's the other range? It's not gone, it's still.
But then you have it on twenty-nine also, you have eighty-five thousand.
Right.
Where's the other eighty-five?
The other eighty-five is page thirty-seven.
Yeah.
And it is line six-three-nine.
Right, and that that's the, that's the, no, HCR, yeah, that's.
Yes.
I mean, but but also the the question is, do you need those two BI? Or do you need the whole eighty-five thousand? Wh-what is that eighty-five thousand on page thirty-six for?
That had been for also originally, we had had the health assistant in there. Um and then we had had the BI and then the money for the clinician. And then the other BI.
So the health assistant needs to come out of the line.
Coming out, so then it six of one half does the other for six, you know, it could be out of this particular one.
No, so I I just wanna be clear. Cuz you've got two eighty-five thousand, you zeroed one out.
Yes.
But then on the other eighty-five thousand, if the health assistant is in there and if the. If the clinician is in there, then those two salaries need to come out of that eighty-five thousand.
Yes. Be taken from there, correct.
So which one is coming out?
So you've got um.
Forty-five.
Well, the eighty-five is showing taken out, just put in back back in the.
Yeah. So so what's gonna happen is you're gonna see that line, depending on what page you wanna look at. On on page twenty-nine. You look on page twenty-nine under contracted services. That line is gonna get reduced by the cost of the health assistant and whatever the offset is of the clinician. And so. You paid twenty percent of the clinician?
Correct.
And the health assistant, I mean, so we're talking.
That's forty-four, eight hundred.
Forty-four and the and the clinician, you're talking about sixty thousand dollars coming out of that line. So you're gonna see that line go down to twenty-five thousand.
No. Well, is it the uh? So what came out of, I don't know, page thirty-seven then?
On page.
Thirty-seven, line six thirty-nine.
Those are BI, well, I.
Those were the BI.
I thi- I think they're. They were coming out of two different places.
Right.
And so we zeroed out the whole line on on six thirty-nine, completely zeroed that one out. And then. We need to go back into page uh.
Previous.
Page thirty-six on five ninety-eight and take out sixty-ish thousand. But I, don't hold me to my math.
Now, uh Joe, could you explain, I'm looking at. Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven and seventy.
So again, keep it, keep in mind that page twenty-seven. Summarizes the objects for every single function. So all the functions for contracted services is ninety-three thousand? That's what it is? So but we've just reduced that.
I think it's.
Yes. And again, I just wanna say on three thirty-six, these are the drivers. That automatically change the other worksheets. So once you change this eighty-five down to twenty-five, it flows through all the way.
On page thirty-six or on page twenty-nine?
Page, page thirty-six is the driver. Page thirty-six, five nine eight.
Is that a function of your spreadsheet or is that a function of the, I don't know, accounting?
All those sheets.
So the eighty-five thousand on the page thirty-six is the one that will change?
Yes.
Not the one on page?
It'll it'll all change automatically, the rest will just.
It'll change also, okay.
Yeah, the 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 plan for for Central is to have two. The two title positions.
Correct.
Is that correct?
We're booking. If funding is there, that is the.
Yeah, that's the plan, right.
Right. And we have four special ed teachers at Central.
Three.
Those things.
Again, I would have to check with Ms. Alexander because I don't have those numbers, so.
Why, I can say that.
I need to check with Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
I did, I did.
We have three.
We currently have three.
Is there an open position?
There is.
So so again, I.
No, without committing, I think it.
Well, I I I just wanna be clear, like, like. I wasn't asked to come with those numbers, so I'm not prepared with those numbers. And regardless, those numbers are so fluid because we assess that every year of where we need to put. People, so. To say we're always gonna have four people or three people or whatever, that that may change, so I just wanna tell you the thing. I mean.
Yeah, I'm going from this. Sheet that that's been passed out.
Right.
I don't have my little chart.
And they had, they had.
But that, that's the current plan as far as what's gonna happen for next year, we're still evaluating. It'll be based on numbers, but I mean.
Sure.
We could have an influx of kindergartners, a whole bunch of them and that are all identified, you know, and need a cake manager. And we may have to come back to the SU board and say we need to add a teacher. That we didn't expect.
We realize that can happen and it's just, it's it's just in in planning, I think what is planning right now is for that to be.
But I guess I'm trying to, I'm trying to be very clear that that should not, that has no impact on your local budget.
Right, it doesn't.
Other than through the assessment, through the assessment, but as far as.
But you don't get assessed for the for the title one, yeah.
The one.
You don't get assessed for title one, so you, yeah, it really shouldn't be discussing title one at the same time you're doing your budget.
Yeah, it's just, it's just.
Just it's kind of to get a feel for the number of adults that are in the building.
Well, I know that's where you're going, yeah, there's a bunch of people in our building.
But but I think it's also that. You can have adults, but they have specific.
Purposes.
Purposes, so that you can't say like, oh, they're gonna run, we got a hundred and thirty kids in a class and we've got X number of adults, so. Do the math and and make it work and that's how many kids is in per class, it doesn't work that way.
Sorry, I wanna go back to the health age one more time. So Carrie said you had, that has been stuck into. On five ninety-eight on three thirty-six.
Correct.
But and then I noticed on line six twenty-one on three thirty-seven, there's a big bump in insurance. For health. And I don't know whether your person just started thinking a different, uh that was line six twenty-one on page.
Three thirty-seven.
Uh I I was just a heads up, I.
No, that's fair, I don't know if I can talk to that one.
Well, the the only thing I can say on page forty. Um that's the listing and again, there was a a para in there that is taken out. So there's a reduction, it'd be a reduction that went through.
It looks like it's an increase.
Yeah, but I'm looking on line six twenty-one on page three thirty-seven.
Six twenty-one, okay.
And and I I was just saying, either, I mean, somebody can take a a different policy and that may be it, or there may be a. Another insurance stuck in there.
We should be able to see, um if we go back to that.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, page.
You're absolutely right.
Yeah, okay, so if we go back to that forty, page forty, and we look at the nerve. That's, that's what it is.
That's right.
Looks like there, looks like there was a change in the health.
Oh, I bet I know why, I know why.
Yeah, no, no, but I I I do know why too.
It was a big one.
Yeah.
Yes.
But it's okay.
But that's a good call, that's.
Making sure we did.
Yeah.
That was an add-on from before.
Yeah.
You've not been getting it, and then we'll leave.
Does that six twenty-one need adjusting?
No.
No, that's where it is. That's where it is.
It's all good.
But the para is a.
Correct. Still need for it, just to clarify. I said there's still a need for her, just to clarify, but. I understand financially.
It's difficult years. Needs are high, but.
Yeah, well, I mean, it'd be nice to get past the ESSR grants and all this gets settled. It'll be a little more straightforward, I assume.
Yeah, it'll settle down and not be quite so.
Light, light out there, I said.
Yeah. So we we just talked about, but um para's. In here, how many are in local units?
I have no para, there's no para, I was put in for next year. The behavior, um the BI was a question, but that's not even enough for BI. We had hoped to put in a kindergarten para um to share, but that's not even. Right now in the summer, either.
It was interesting to hear, um I don't know what was that was talking, that I've been talking about comparison of our. Children coming in kindergarten in first grade and noting that how how much impacted the skills were. By probably the COVID situation, which I hate to put everything on COVID, but. Those young children in that young situation, they had, they just did not have. The levels, the interactions, those interactions or anything that that could support them in the next years.
Mm-hmm.
So it's 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 a huge thing, hopefully, hopefully though this year in school. Um we're just beginning, we're still December, hopefully by May, we're seeing, you know, some. Some significant differences.
Absolutely.
In those children and and the abilities and the skills that they've learned. I just, I'm so hopeful, I just. And I know you are too.
We are, it's a big, there are many deficits from the students right now, just speech, OT, you name it. Um and a lot of students unfortunately were the byproduct of sitting, waiting for the parents who were on a screen if they're working. And you know, and they didn't have, because the centers weren't all open, the, you know, the adult to child ratio wasn't the same. Um and that's just the byproducts of the effects of the pandemic, so.
And a screen is very, very different looking at it than than a interaction with any person and at that level, the. The uh attention span. I mean, if you're at home, you don't have that person to guide you and be able to learn the SIP or do any of those kinds of things, so all of that. So we're looking at just that one person that's under the salaries at the top.
Correct, and that would be an interventionist.
Okay, all right, so are we set with Central? Were there any other questions, Bill or Caitlin, Chris?
Thank you.
For us. Okay. And. I said one last time, it said that contracted services was up due to the number of five oh four students. That are out there for evaluations and a shift. A parent educator, that should have not made it up, that should have, that's gone down, um. You just had your counselor for the first time today. That must have been a blessing.
Yes, one hundred percent. Thank you so much for uh moving that forward, um. Yeah, it will make a huge difference.
And that may impact, you know, particularly in our month or so. As to your needs too, because that had to have been a tremendous. Feeling to get somebody else to be able to be open on some of those things. Contracted services are up, what what do you have in in that category that you're looking at that? They're up by five thousand.
Can you tell me where you are um? Like, what page you're on?
Line thirty, yeah, page forty.
Page forty-two. And Laura, I'll give you a specific page, if you look at page fifty-one.
Yep.
Line seven twenty.
Funds to that?
Yeah.
Page fifty-one, line seven twenty. Right, so what this refers to, um as I mentioned last time, was um specific again to five oh four. Students and whether or not they would need a uh psych eval, um. Psychoeducational evaluation, so um under five oh four and or an FBA. So again, um Shelley Wilson had recommended that we uh increase that budget line. And so this number that's there represents two of each, so two psych evals and two um FBA.
That's just a mouse, that's for mouse.
Correct. We currently have eleven five oh four students.
Other one, the the first line is up, your your salaries are up by thirty-nine thousand.
Again, back on page forty-two.
Page forty-two.
Line three.
At the top, it's the stenosis.
That's what the range is. The salary increases.
Yes. So line seven, it's it's just the percentage.
Okay, so that's.
That that doesn't, that doesn't include anyone new, that is um.
Laura, that that explains that, thank you, um.
Although Jim, I have a question for you now that I'm seeing this document, um. Last time we had talked about, and maybe it's somewhere else, Jim. Uh we talked about the um bringing our level of intervention back to pre-COVID. So currently we have three and title, assuming money's come through, we would have one. And pre-COVID, we had two, one title funded and one um locally funded, so Jim, we talked. We talked about that, I don't. I don't know where that went, Jim.
I have not gotten any kind of details or clarification on that at this time, so. I I just didn't have that piece.
I think it wasn't that one, that one was moved to either title or something else. And 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 so that was.
So last, last, our la- our last meeting, Laura had stated that her ask was going to be to add in. An academic interventionist, um and and then she said and, and Jig said, nope, no ands, right?
You'll be, it's been history, but.
But but you said you 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 could support that, um and so, well, I'm just saying, so.
But it's starting in here.
It didn't make it in yet, so that I just wanted to clarify. It didn't make it in yet, so that, I just wanted to clarify that, that, that wasn't asked, that's, um, it just. There was some confusion on getting that in there, so.
Cause Carrie's, cause Carrie's ask did get in there.
Correct.
And, and Laura's did.
Correct.
Yeah, but I, I don't know how, you know, with, with. Um, the council being added back in, which we desperately, you know, she felt she desperately needed. And being without for the three months, well, at this point, whether she's still, really. Needs that or can get, I mean, there's what, seventy-five students in.
Again, school counselor. Academic intervention, totally different, and I think it's just, but I, I don't want to cloud it up, because I think it's like, it's like apples and oranges. And, and what they do, and, um, and an academic interventionist is, is going to be working with students in, in reading, writing, and mathematics. I mean, a school counselor, you know, is not going to be focused on doing that piece, so. Putting one in place is not taking the, the place of another, so.
The other thing that I would just like to add, um, that I, um, also mentioned at the last meeting. Was my and, as Andy remember, reminded everyone, um, the other ask was for a, um. Uh, like a behavior support person, and so I understand that the board, um, isn't able to put that in the budget. But that even escalates the need for a counselor, because, um, then I don't have another person to help support behavior besides myself. So a full-time counselor is the ask at this time.
Well, I think you have that at this, at this point, right, I mean.
Yeah. Yes, you're correct, Priscilla.
Those are not apples and oranges.
But what's missing, let's make it clear for the, for the board, that what's, what's missing from this budget, Laura, that you. Uh, that you wanted in there was the academic interventionists.
That is correct, Jigs.
The others have been able to offset that, but I'm not seeing what you could do possibly to offset that, so.
Yeah, I do not have, um, any wiggle room whatsoever, Priscilla, so you are correct. Um, I do not have any offset, the school-based clinician, as we know, was the only offset. And that, um, went into the SU, and the only other thing was the elimination of one para. Um, that you can see in that second line, um, so I do not have, uh, the full amount to offset a, uh, academic interventionist.
Uh, Laura, I will say, uh, there's thirty thousand dollars difference between your, your guidance counselors. So you've got thirty that, that you can put towards that.
Oh, that's great news, thank you for that information.
For us to be at the same level we were at last, this, this year.
Um, yes, for what we had budgeted, we had a hundred and seven in there, and the cost is, uh, seventy-seven.
Well, that's, that's a good guess.
Yeah, so I think we need to come back and connect with, with the correction.
Right, the next round.
Yeah.
Hold on each of the.
That was about one.
And then we'll have another.
Why would we vote on each of the budgets?
Pardon?
Why would we vote on each of the budgets? Well, it's one budget, right?
One.
Well, that's right.
It's one. Yeah. So I guess at this point, we're, we're looking at, um, what the, um, assessment levels are at, do you have other in- information for us, Jim?
The assessments that you're looking at in here are exactly where we stand today with. With again, uh, some of the superindependents, um, sitting through and trying to squeeze in some areas, so. That's, the, the assessments are right where we are as of today.
And we, yes, she's dealing with those on Wednesday and then on the two next Wednesdays, I think, so. Um, they'll be looking at all of that at that point, right, is that correct, Chris?
Right, that means it's been long for Wednesday.
Right.
This company.
Right, so hopefully that'll give this some five oh seven to things and.
Yeah, we gotta find a way that somehow.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think the, the reports that came out Friday with that. Increases in taxes, that eighteen point five percent. Across the state averages. Is kind of, kind of hitting us, but hopefully that'll, that'll, some of that, when they come out with their other figures and their other numbers, we'll be able to look at that.
Well, I'm certain, though, you know, it's up, they, one cautionary note about that tax letter is that, um. It, it's kind of written by a politician, and the data they use to. Try to figure out whether there's going to be an increase, it's taken from the business managers, like, weeks ago, right?
Right.
So, so they, the business managers are asked, what do your budgets look like, and everybody goes, well, I don't know. And, and so they send, they start with a really high figure. And then everybody's kind of pleasantly surprised that once the boards have whittled away at these budgets, oh, it isn't quite so bad. I, I think it's still going to be an increase, but, but I don't think it's going to be the. The catastrophic skies falling that the tax letter says, but. We'll see.
Totally hopeful, now, but, um, we still don't know what, what they're doing as far as their count of students and how they're looking at all that. That changes with going to now the Act one twenty-seven and all of that.
And we may, we may be on the good side of that.
Hopefully, hopefully.
When, when do they equalize people's accounts, or December sometime?
Nicolee said that they would try to finalize that this week.
Sounds good.
She's waiting for data from other A O E agencies, and so she's on hold now, but hopefully this week.
That must be quite, uh, to do that, the whole of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I have, the only regret that I would say is, it's too bad that the state didn't have this all. You know, the, the format finalized in June or July, so that it wouldn't be such a. Kind of a cluster going forward, I mean.
Yeah. No, yeah.
Yeah.
You know about the state of what? Or the legislature.
So, do you have any other questions on the, the, um, budget? Andy, can you give us a very, very, very quick. That's our funding summary.
Um, so I don't have a timeline right now, um, we're, we're just starting to get, um. Some numbers back in, um, it's looking like the elementary school, and, and there should be, I think, probably either at our next meeting. Uh, we should be coming with some, um, uh, numbers for you to vote on and, and, um, move forward with that. But it's looking like the, um. The kitchen project is coming in actually almost twenty thousand dollars under budget. Um, the roofing project at Central is, uh, possibly sixty plus thousand dollars under budget. Um, if we can save the insulation, kind of like the conversation we had at the high school. If we can save the insulation at the middle school or the central, that, that could reduce that cost a little bit more. Um, and then the roof here is coming in, uh, lower than what we, uh, projected in for both, um, also by about. Almost sixty thousand dollars, so, um, by using the construction management, that was the whole point, is that they can consolidate those things, so, um. Yeah, Steve had sent this to me late yesterday and just said that, you know, um, the finalized numbers should be coming through, so we should be able to bring those to you. I, I'm hoping by, um, next meeting.
Sounds, sounds good.
So, uh, it's really good, I think some of the other things are, um, just. Cause I know it's going to come up, so I'm just going to say it now, um, I went back through minutes, I don't think this board ever, um, asked us to go out to bid. For, um, the, uh, stairs and things like that, um, so we, we want to be, we have.
We've asked about it.
We, we've talked about it, but I don't think you, I didn't, I couldn't put a formal motion when I went back through it, so.
By consensus, we did it.
I would. After dealing with some of the other boards, I would appreciate a motion, um, just because that would, um, a motion for us to go out to. To develop a bid to go out, uh, to do those projects, that would be helpful.
It would be the inclusive projects, it would be the, the stairs, the coping or whatever.
Correct, it would be that, it would be that.
Generally the masonry or whatever.
Masonry, caulking, and.
I'll make that motion, that we, we ask the superintendent to come back to us with the. With the bid specs or bids on the, uh, masonry repairs at Blue's School.
Okay, so we have a motion for, um, do we, do we have, if, make the bid specs first and then the bids?
Yeah, I'll ask Steve Horton to write up a bid spec and bring it to you.
Yeah, just, okay, that's right. Uh, to write up bid specs so that it can be sent out to, and, and send it out to bid. Um, for the stairs and the coping and the inclusive projects that we talked about, how's that? That covers.
Yep.
Both. Okay, any discussion? We talked about it several months ago and kind of by consensus, and, you know, so I think our board is pretty well okay with that, um, uh, Bill, how do you vote?
Yes. I lost audio.
You got a lot of update on that, huh?
Hello?
We can hear you, Bill.
Okay, now you're coming through, Andy, thank you.
Yeah, um, uh, so with the, uh, we're trying to, we've got to go dig through our records for the lease agreement or the original purchase agreement of the green space, so that's something, um.
And that's the deed.
The deed, yeah, sorry, did I say lease?
Just go to the town hall.
Yeah, so we just haven't had the time to, um, get down there.
In fact, there's all, there was at one time a file full of every single deed in every school district.
Yeah, they're, they're down in the basement, we just haven't had the time to go down and.
I'm not sure that one's in there, though.
Okay.
They need to go to the town hall for that.
Um, so we're working on that, and then I did the, uh, just because it's not on here, I'm sorry, but I'm going to tie it into the green space. I forgot to add it in the adjustments, if you're okay with it, is the, the bus depot space.
Um, I left it off because you were still in the process of looking into that, so I didn't put it.
Ah, so, well, if I could just update you really fast on that, um, yeah, the realtor that, um. Mr. Kibby had kind of guided me towards, um, I think had approached that, that the property's landlocked. Um, and had approached maybe one of the abutters, um, one of the abutters has reached out to another lister. And the lister came in to me and said, are you guys trying to get rid of this, you know, sell it, and I said, well, the board is interested to see what they could do, and he. And that lister said they would go back to that person and talk to him, so that's where we are on that.
No, uh. In Vermont, no piece of property can be landlocked, there, there is technically a right of way.
Okay.
Just.
I didn't know that, Chris.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And it kind of goes through someone's driveway, as I recall, some Golden Hill Road, which is the road that plunges down.
Yeah, and it's all swampy, a lot of swamp.
Well, I don't know what the piece of property that I've never even walked up to.
We should go out there, see if there's any.
I don't know.
Margins. Maybe there's deer, maybe there's deer. So, that's what I have right now, so.
Okay. Okay, good, um, do we need an executive session?
I think it'd be good to update you on a, a personnel matter.
So, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for a personnel matter. Where premature knowledge places the board or the individuals at a disadvantage.
So moved.
Okay, so, there is a motion, Laura, to go into executive session for a personal matter where, um, uh, premature knowledge could place the board or the. Um, personnel at a disadvantage and to invite, um, administration, is that okay? And invite, and administration. Um, Bill?
Yes.
Okay, so we're back at, um, executive session and, um. Um, the board. Wants to take action, so Chris, would you make a motion for us, please?
I'll give it a go, um. A move that the board approved, uh, separation teacher, uh, separation agreement with a, a. Bellis Wells Middle School teacher and authorize the chair and the superintendent to sign on the board's behalf.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, um, Bill, how do you vote?
Yes.
And those in the room, supper down, okay? At passes. Uh, director's comments. Uh, Bill, did a director's comment?
Uh, just that I look forward to being with you all for the next meeting in two weeks' time.
We hope you feel lots better.
I, I already am, thank you, Priscilla.
Uh, Caitlin?
Um, just thank you to everybody in this room, because I feel like with budgeting, I mean, just having from iceberg to iceberg of understanding and trying to like grasp where objects are. And I really appreciate the level of expertise that everybody brings to this, because I, it's mind-boggling to me that it happens every single year, it's incredible with work and focus into it, so thank you all.
Yes, good point.
Uh, Chris?
Yeah, I actually, I wanted to, um, thank the principals of the administration, they did a lot of work on the budgets, and, and I thought did a nice job. And I also wanted to mention the Vermont School Boards Association is having a seminar, I think on December twelfth, for people. Who are interested in running, uh, being on school boards, and so it's, it's just a generic, uh. You know, here's what it's about, and, um, here's what you do, and, and here are the roles and responsibilities of school board members, and I really encourage people. In the community to, to take part, because I, I think participation on our local boards is, is a really important, um. So, you know, it helps our democracy and it, it brings more voices to the table, which is kind of always a good thing, you know?
Yes.
This is where we are, that where you can feel safe of when some of these other places. So be very thankful. Keep your prayers going for all the living peoples. Thank you. Data next mailing buildings and grounds. Andy, does that set up for December 15?
I believe we are still to go, yes.
Yes. Okay, that's starting at 8:30 in the morning, I believe.
I'll, I'll get a, I can, yeah.
And the meeting following that is the Rockin' Hand Board, December 18th at 5:30 where we'll again be doing meeting room questions on our budget. Thank you guys for answering so much tonight. Anything else from anyone? Any other agenda items that will get come to me in the way the board, the same kind of ratio with it? A German at 7:49 if there's no rejection. Knowing none were adjourned.
All right. Good night, everyone.